Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Town and Monroe Board of Finance regular meeting to order. Today is Thursday, July seventeenth. And the time is six oh one P M. The meeting is being recorded and will be available on the town's website. Speaker attendance, Steve Kirsch.
Present.
Nick Sentimentis.
Present.
Catherine Stoffer.
Present.
Sam Spino. She's not here, and Mark O'Donnell, who can't make it. First elect was not here, Ron Bonowski.
Here.
Heidi Need.
Here.
Deb Heim.
Here.
Frank Dutchess.
Here.
And Joe Kozza.
Here.
Thank you. First item is review of the minutes for our motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Steve Kirsch, I'm going to accept the meeting minutes for Memphis two twenty forty five.
Second.
Well, second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, alright. Steve Kirsch.
Aye.
Catherine Stoffer.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Okay. Superintendent Communications.
Got it. I think part of this kind of goes into the General Fund Report from the Republican Schools, just wanted to give you kind of an update of where we stay for the end of the year. At the board meeting last Monday, we reported that we were at about a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Surplus for the year. We did run a warrant today and close out some of our POs and that surplus has increased about forty eight thousand dollars. We're at about a hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Okay.
So we have obviously still waiting on some more on some more bills to get paid.
That that number will will change, but that's what we sit as of.
Yeah, change up or down?
It should, it should, the surplus should go up. I mean, we're closing, I wouldn't expect to put any more to to open any new purchase orders at this point unless something came in that wasn't encumbered that, you know, which I wouldn't expect at this point.
Joe, is the board going to have an August meeting to talk about any things we did not want to?
They're not sure yet. Yeah, they're not sure yet. They're gonna have an August meeting, but if if we don't, the next one is September second. So I think I think currently we had one for the the second meeting in August is when we had tentatively scheduled, so the third, the third Monday in August. So if we don't have that meeting, we would discuss that at the the first meeting after Labor Day, which is that Tuesday night.
Do we have to do anything by a certain period of time with that money that?
If you were gonna try, like say hypothetically.
Hold it someplace?
No, you could make that transfer in September.
In September?
Yeah.
I mean, we're still gonna close and stuff.
Yeah, we've made it September. I think we've made it as late as.
It may have been. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna run up to some.
Like that line or something? Yeah, well, with the audit, I just send them the adjustments.
Okay.
You guys may come after we.
Okay, okay. Yeah, as as long as, as long as we don't get ourselves caught on the catch twenty two, I'm fine.
Look, the auditors will either ask for copies of the minutes or they'll go online and look at the minutes themselves and Heidi will send them.
Okay, because at some point, you know, at some point it ends, right?
Yes, and once the audit, well, once the audit progresses and the numbers become final.
I know, you know, one of the pressures that we faced in the past few years has been enrollment, just having a little, little bit of rest for here. Our kindergarten enrollment numbers are a little bit lower than originally projected. So that's good. We have one less section at Monroe entry, which is which is seven percent, you know, we talked about enrollment and graphics and things like that. My only, my only caveat with that is this was like, this was the first full year that parents prepared for the kindergarten age change. So anecdotally, without parents, a lot of parents, you know, they're not, you know, last year was kind of thrust on people really quickly and a lot of people, you know, didn't have daycare plans, so they rushed to get their kids through the waiver process and into kindergarten last year. So I I think that could be a part of it, but it may not be, could, you know, we'll keep, we're gonna keep close on it. But this was the first year that parents had a, and they had ample time to prepare. They weren't gonna be sending their kids if they were born after September first because the new cutoff is now September first, not, not January first.
Okay, so two questions. Is there any other raids with classroom press pressures or teachers?
The biggest ones right now are, I think, gonna be next year's second and fourth. Those are our two biggest pressure points. Right now, that's six sections at Point Hall right now. There's four or five that that's, that's a big, that's second and fourth, we're gonna keep big, big ones.
Okay, and the second question, Jen recorded at the at the board meeting the other night of where, given the people who will age out, the that will age out. Am I correct that you're still at a higher enrollment starting in December than you were this past September?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So, so we're not, we didn't come back down and we're, we're, our, our coming down is, is at a higher level.
Yeah, I forgot where we.
No, my, my question is, just relatively speaking, yes, we're gonna lose
We're gonna lose forty kids.
Is we're still gonna start the school year. This, this number would be more than.
And then the last thing, I'll move back and I already talked about it, but negotiations for teachers start in August. I end August, begin with September and oh, as of.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Can I just, I just do a little house? Catherine and Deb are both, you're both muted. I don't know if that's intentional or not.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Okay, you, you were muted. That was intentional?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. Alright, so review of our financial reports. So year-to-date general fund budget report.
So what, I, I actually, if I can just, I ran a report as of this afternoon.
Okay.
And this is, you know, it was Board of Ed and Town combined. Right now, we're showing an overall surplus of eight hundred and two thousand dollars. Now, that's with the one thirty with the Board of Ed surplus, so that number's actually go go up. And I would expect that number to go up because the town side, the same as the board side, we're gonna be closing some purchase orders. We wouldn't expect to open any new purchase orders at this time. Certainly nothing material. The one caveat there is, you know, we, we have a we have a surplus of of, you know, two and in, on the revenue side, we are, we're negative. And that's because of, we had a signed fund balance of two point five million, I believe is the number. So we haven't
Taken it.
Taken it.
Yeah.
That's over. And hopefully we won't need it through, you know.
So you don't know how much of that you will need? Is that what you're saying?
So right now, we have a surplus with the negative revenue, so I think we're okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, we need to say a little.
Okay.
So that will just go up as everything is completed.
As we close POs, I would expect that number to go up, yes.
Okay, alright. Do we know how many POs are still open?
So overall, so the report I pulled this afternoon is showing two point one million, but there was a warrant run today by the Board of Ed, which, which cut the Board of Ed warrants in half that are open. I'm sorry, the POs that are, that are open, so right now, overall, it's about one point, town and Board of Ed, it's about one point five million that are still open in purchase orders.
Okay.
So we don't know if that's five or thirty five? Like as far as.
You don't have many POs.
Oh, how many?
Yeah.
No, I don't have a, I mean, we could run, I don't have a, I don't, I don't know how many.
Guess it's around twenty pages right now. That answer your question, Catherine?
It does. I knew, I knew it would not be something that, you know, you could give me an exact answer on. It's all good. I was just looking for like a ballpark idea.
Yeah.
Twenty pages and thirty lines of paper.
But definitely just.
No, I don't, I don't want anything, I don't want any of that, but I was just wondering like a number.
Okay.
And in the vet, you know, looking at, you know, not to pick on Public Works, but you know, the lack it's encumbered, you know, for June thirtieth and the, and it gets, you know, done in July and August and it just kind of set up a aiding season with the end of the fiscal year, but you know, between you know, there, there's, there's almost three hundred opens with the Road and Building, that's just on the, on the general fund or there could be I'm sure there's purchase orders open.
Towny Road?
In Towny Road, off budget and funds, so. Which those don't lapse.
The general funds, yeah.
Boy, walked and walked and got hurt in here seamlessly.
Well, I walked in and I logged out at a meeting and I just sped in here because I didn't want to miss anything that you said. Okay, anything specific on the public school side? You kind of touched on.
Yeah, you know, we did, the one thing I'll add to what Joe said is, is the word of education did approve a budget transfer, so in, in the fund statement, it looks like there's a lot of negative balances. That was a cleanup on.
Okay.
And it was, the budget transfer was.
Alright, any questions on those? Okay, then we have the quarterly trial balance report. And then the quarterly fire department report. Yeah, Nick, you go.
You go.
Okay.
Anything new to those important?
No, but I don't give them a hard review. Chris.
Yeah, I will say, like, I did question a couple things in there, but so this and how the numbers are calculated. With the percentages and such, it looks a little confusing to me. So I was gonna ask some clarifying questions.
If, if you, I, I don't know how you wanna do that, if you wanna, if you wanna get, send an email to me, I could forward it to Chris Kreis or if you have Chris Kreis.
Yeah.
You could.
I'll, I'll put it together in an email.
Yeah, and then we could have the response for the next meeting.
Okay.
That way everyone can see it.
I have a question about, just like in general for these, for our reports. So they're required to send these to us in order to receive their funds, right? Is there any guideline as to how they are to spend the money? Or is it just for operations?
It's for op, I mean, they, they, they submit a budget to us and they should be spending it in accordance with the budget. I mean, it's you know, any operation could have to pivot through the course of the year.
Okay.
But, you know, I think they've been, they've been sending us, I don't know, how, how long do we start requiring the quarters?
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we thought it was good practice for them to send a quarter.
Yeah, so we have it in the.
Yeah.
Alright, Treasurer's report.
For fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, we had a full year interest revenue of two point eight and change against a budget of two point five. So we had a positive interest revenue of three hundred and twenty-three thousand in twenty forty-five. Next week, we'll know if we're gonna get a July interest rate cut. Probably not. Between Powell and Trump, I don't think, I don't think either is gonna give way.
Still maybe.
But if we, if we do, that's fine, but I think probably we're looking at the next interest rate move. By the Fed, the market still, still moves itself, but by the Fed, probably with the September meeting.
Yeah, maybe just Powell. I don't know if he's focused on, you know, all the other governors too, so.
He, he's, he's the face and voice. If we don't see a reduction to September, that would actually put us on a good path for our fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six plan. The current stiff rate out there is at four point four two percent. And in our little model, we use four point two five starting in in July. We rolled over two point billion last week. You know, we moved it into three months and one year, just based the way the the interest rates were flowing, the three month was fairly attractive. The one year is where the hedge, where we're going. We have another five hundred thousand rolling over this week.
How was that two point one split?
A million, one. A million, one, I think was for the one year and a million was the other way, let me see. Another way around, a million, one on the three month and a million on the twelve month. And that's the treasurer report.
Oh, thank you.
Well, thanks. I'm sorry, let me see. What, what's the next one?
Five hundred thousand, and that's next week.
And what are you gonna roll with him?
You know, I have her send me, the week it's done, send me what the current rates are. She sends me the three, she sends me the one, the three, the six and the twelve. Because I'm not taking anything out past twelve. And, and then I take a look at it and see where it looks. And I can take a look at it in comparison to the, to the stiff rate as well. The stiff has actually been doing pretty well. And, and if you look at it, that's what we get on the general fund that's in the bank, as well as we've got about fourteen million, I think it is, off the top of my head, with the state. So that's all getting that, that four point four two rate, which is a nice rate right now.
So in terms of maturity, since we've stuck the town on the job, we have, are we fairly well spread or are we gonna get hit with a?
No, it's, 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 it's kind of spread. Most everything will mature in the current fiscal year, which means we'll see all the interest revenue from it in the current fiscal year. As we start adding more, it'll start catching, and if we're taking six or twelve months as we go down the road, some of that will recur in the following year to twenty seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, Deb, Tax Collector's report.
Okay, um, we ended the year quite nicely. Overall, you know, we hit budget, we collected for another four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in addition to what we're supposed to collect. And with interest of back interest and prior year taxes, there was another, like, two hundred thousand. So we ended up collecting seven hundred and twenty-six thousand over what we budgeted for, which I thought was a good year end. The collections are going well this month. Everything's out and thank God, no hitches. So I'm happy. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I think we're in a good position right now. Thank you.
I checked clear, it's fine. I saw it. So, so Deb, the, the motor vehicles never really did tax out.
Well, we budgeted for, that was, I mean, we budgeted for seven million five and we only built out seven, seven, five. That means everything had to be collected from what you budgeted.
Yeah.
Because, so there was no leeway, much there for much to do.
Because of adjustments and whatnot.
Yeah, with all the adjustments, you know, Sessor does and we move and everything else, there wasn't much leeway there. And with personal property, we, you budgeted five eight, five seven. And we only build, I'm looking at my paperwork, five six, so we budgeted more than we, we built.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I was looking at the un, un, uncollected percentage and, you know.
Historically, we've been at ninety-eight percent.
Yeah, and, and we talked about were able to delay and all that, so I, I was not a criticism, not a, not actually a question, because we, we sort of expected it. So more, more that it just never closed, right?
Right, and then, and then, you know, Rob will say we have that sixty day rule, which anything collected on the back for the next sixty days gets included into the you know, by the books and everything. So my June thirtieth and what the auditors have are two different animals.
Okay.
Give it another year or two. People will pay the motor vehicle when they need to re-register.
Exactly, because now they have three-year registration and we knew that was gonna happen when they switched to three-years registration two years ago. And we're finding a lot of unregistered cars, so.
Well, maybe we should do, like Bridgeport, hire somebody or drive them around and find all the people that are.
All the New York.
The park stickers work very well because if they want to use the park, they have a park sticker and that's how I'm finding a lot of these people. They want the park sticker, but they can't have a park sticker until we build them and they register the cars, get them on the rolls.
Yeah, well, what was the argument? There was a huge number that Bridgeport has, has come up with by hiring a company to scan.
Like five thousand, like.
Yeah, so some crazy thing. I thought New Haven was doing it too, but I recently saw an article in Bridgeport, yeah. Yeah, you hire a company, they, they, they go around, they scan, they do multiple scans, they do all the due diligence and they take.
But they're like fifteen percent.
Yeah, but. One, doesn't really cost the town anything because they're taking it all.
Well, you could add a ten to fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Since we can't build them for that. Not for the first year.
Okay. Alright, public participation. I don't see anyone that will follow or anything. Alright, so new business, we have a transfer of a hundred and four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents, which was a FEMA grant and we want to transfer that to the Emergency and Disaster Relief Fund.
Madam Chair, I have a resolution I will now read and ask for its adoption. Resolved, the following budget transfer be approved pursuant to Chapter Eight, Section Seven G of the Town Charter for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. One hundred and four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents from general fund transfer out and one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents to Emergency Disaster Relief Fund transfer in. These funds having been received from FEMA for the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four flood for the Guski pond dam.
One second.
One second.
Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Alright. The second is the letter from W M N R and, are you Kurt Anderson? Hi. No, I don't know Kurt. Well, you've probably been here before, right?
No, every year.
Well, very briefly, I had to work on condensing this. It's been my pleasure to have been General Manager of W M R since nineteen eighty-two. I started out as a Dollar Year volunteer and now get paid fifty thousand dollars. And the reason why I'm here today, why W M N R is even here today, let me boil it down to forty-five seconds. W M R started as a high school radio station located in the original first version of Massach High School, we're on to the third version, with students and community adults. Nineteen eighty-two has pivoted and changed to become classical music. And there was an outside organization was gonna take over the license, but their bridge funding fell apart, fell out and then it fell back to the original and new volunteers to take over. We built it up, it's a special revenue fund. It was in Massach High School to two thousand and three when the second renovation occurred. Then it moved out into rented space on Route twenty-five next to Bradford Green. And then in two thousand and nine, we had nothing, had nothing to do with the kids for years. We then got moved over to the town. And so we're a special revenue fund. Our budget is part of the town budget only to the extent that in the expenses of finance and in H R, there is a, a credit offset from our accounts. Otherwise, unlike all the other departments, we get to keep our cash balance at the end of year. There was donations given to operate the radio station so they can't, you know, go to plow, plow or pave roads. So we're a special revenue fund. We get, we have the quarterly W M R Commission that meets. I do present them with quarterly financial reports. And then once a year, go to the town council for, to then, after the W M R Commission approves a budget, goes to town council, it's on the consent calendars. Really pro forma, and then I get to visit you.
Great.
And but, you know, this budget, which if you'd like to, I mean, technically we're after July one, but I really hide his already inputted the numbers. But again, because we have our own cash reserve, it, it's not as critical as to whether the outstanding POs and whether the outstanding whatever. We're fortunate, in the last at least ten years, we've always won a surplus. Last year, I think I ran, two thousand and twenty-four, we ran under a thousand dollars. But we had so many surpluses, we keep our own cash reserve, we're good. And this budget, if you would like to approve it pro forma, is temporary. As you may hear, there's a recision vote going through Congress. Now, the one question which people don't understand is the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, which funds stations which give money to NPR and PBS, they give it to other stations, whether they're tribal stations, whether they're little stations in three thousand people towns in Alaska. Or W M R qualifies as a professionally-run meetings, certain operational criteria. They don't carry NPR news, they don't do any news, but we do get their support. And there are things we had to do, we get, we had our own yearly audit we paid for, specific, just to W M R. But that fund, those funds are gonna probably go away. The recision vote wasn't rescinding monies that occurred in the current government fiscal year, October one to September thirtieth. But rather, the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, when it was set up in the early seventies, it was forward funded. So they're pulling back funding for this coming October one and the next October one. So normally, October one, Treasury sends Corporation for Public Broadcasting their money. We get a grant offer in November and the town council signs off on it in December and then we get a check in January. So nothing we own has to go back. We're talking about forward funding, which impurs, affects my current, the town W M R's current fiscal year, which is, of course, the town's fiscal year. So I've gotta read through the budget, go back through everybody, you'll see me again another. Well, probably not till September. I probably, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to hit the one town council meet. Now, I'll probably do September. I'll do W M R Commission Tuesday after Labor Day, then the next town council meeting and then see you guys later in September. We're very fortunate, we have great cash reserve, which you could see on the second page at the bottom. Bit list cash balance as of six thirty twenty-four, at the close of that fiscal year when this was prepared, which was in May twenty-eighth, it shows that again, our own cash balance. We're very fortunate that Frank Dutchess does invest it with that great four point four ten percent. You know, that's why you see a nice interest rate in there. We didn't used to get that, but we do now, and thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Great.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask the question now and then I'll put the notion on the sword. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll ask the question now, I don't have the motion on the sword. My only question was the bank service charge on, on page two.
Yeah.
That sort of seems like a lot of money to me, although it's been sort of steady. What, what is?
Well, as you know.
It's seven hundred.
As you know, the town has negotiated a great deal with Newtown Savings Bank. So every time we make a deposit to our account at the town, it's the lowest possible charge they have. However, WMNR gets a lot of donations via credit card. So those are credit card processing fees. And of course, that doesn't go through Newtown Savings Bank, though the money does end up there. It goes through a credit card processor, and then it goes to a third party, and then eventually it, it does get back. So those are credit card processes.
Yeah, okay, because it said banks or, I was like.
Well, it was an old category, and we didn't establish a second one just for credit cards, you know.
That's fine. Cool. That was my only question. I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move that the FY twenty twenty-six proposed budget for WMNR is hereby approved as presented, and that the full text of Curtis' letter of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the WMNR budget details be included in the minutes of this meeting.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you. There's not anything else? The motion adjourned?
I moved.